We'll call this meeting to order. Please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Polley.
Excuse that.
Trustee Laffin.
Here.
Clerk Clavitch here. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Kroll.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, are there any additions, corrections, or substitutions to the agenda as presented? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve.
Support.
We have motion and support on the table. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online, please use the bottom taskbar to raise your hand or to send a message so that we can communicate directly with you. Good evening, Mr. Johnson. Can you hear us?
Hello. He's still joined.
Still joined. Let's have somebody. Well, seeing no public comment at this point, we'll move forward in the agenda to the payment of the bills. I'll entertain a payment of bills.
I'll make the motion.
Or do so, yes. We have a motion and support. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of January eleventh, a regularly scheduled meeting of 2022. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to approve the minutes as presented. Is there support?
Support.
We had a trustee Reiner, trustee Laffin via SCOTC. All those in favor of approving the minutes of January eleventh signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Moving forward with correspondence, we have two pieces of correspondence, Alpena Power increasing their general rates, and then the 2022 matching phones from Alpena County Road Commission. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the correspondence as presented. So a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving and filing the correspondence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Correspondence has been received and filed. No old business, moving forward into new business, the introduction of ordinance 149, floodplain management ordinance. Mr. Gold, would you like to?
Sure. Talk about that. The first two paragraphs of the Eagle representative's letter accompanies a sample ordinance I used for today. States the federal, well FEMA, has completed new firms, firms are new flood insurance rate maps for Alpena County. The firms are scheduled to go into effect on June 1st of this year. Your community should have recently received an agreement indicating this is the case. Your community currently participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. As a member of that program, your community must have an ordinance that properly adopts the new firms effective prior to June 1st of this year. And so I took their sample ordinance and adapted it to the road township, and it is included with the meeting packet. And so today is the day that I'm requesting a motion to introduce proposed ordinance number 149.
I'd entertain a motion move forward with the recommendation of introducing ordinance 149, the floodplain management ordinance.
So.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Well, does this change anything? Do we know? Or how do, how do, would we advise a citizen? Where they could check or how they can check to see if their property is included and what that means to them?
I just actually received this last week, the bundle of the firms, the maps. So I had introduced this in the planning commission probably a year ago when this process started with FEMA. So this will be revisited again by planning commission, but we'll also make sure that the hard copies for maps, I think, and I'll let trustee Laffin with his experience of floodplain insurance. This is an insurance driver. So the people that are going to be directly impacted by the changes to the floodplain, I'm sure are already being contacted by their insurers. But we will actually have the opportunity to public inspection here as well.
Because it's something we can put on our website.
If I could get them electronically, or at least we could feed the link, but I'll show you the stack of individual section maps for the it's, it's fairly in-depth.
In the, the Eagle official included a link. He said the maps can be viewed online at msc dot fema dot gov. When you search under Alpena Township, so maybe a link can be.
We can, we can definitely do a link, but it wouldn't be, the hard copies can be here for inspection.
I don't have a copy in my house.
Yeah, both the clerk and the supervisor got the hard copies mailed. The planning commission helped with the initial phases of this. And then I believe that FEMA used a third party to extend the, the firms. So we have a motion and support to the introduction. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward in the agenda is some budget adjustments. Pretty minimal, to say the least. We had basically just two adjustments, one in public safety and one in the general fund. The general fund was assessing department. And public safety is self-explanatory. I would entertain a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Trustee Kroll.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes.
Um, I'm a little concerned like with the fire department. They seem in their expenditures that there's and it's, we're should be at like eighty-four percent, eighty-three point eight four percent of our budget. I think we really need to kind of really watch.
The majority of this budget is adjustments to get money into the solid table.
Yeah. Right.
Yes, and I've already verbally had that conversation with Chief Hanson some time ago, but.
We're taking a lot of overtime. Is that part of it?
Part of the problem. That is part of it. Any other discussion to the budget adjustments? I'll, we'll do a roll call.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to our new business item number three, the planning commission appointment. We had last meeting, we had an appointment for a vacancy. We actually had a term expire and I found some newer blood. And my recommendation for a planning commission appointment is Corey Code, township resident and business owner. He owns Harborside Kent to the planning commission.
What's his last name?
Code.
C O D E.
C O D.
Corey.
Corey.
Code. I'm familiar with the code, his last name, but he wasn't familiar with Corey. Are we, are we doing this in replacement of the one that we appointed last month? Or is this in addition to?
We had two, we had terms, one-year terms sequentially expire, Anne Marie Rich, which we appointed her appointment at the previous meeting, I do believe.
We did Polly.
Yeah, and Polly.
Yeah.
And Chuck LaFever.
Is Chuck leaving or is he?
Chuck's term has expired.
Okay.
What, how many year term?
Three-year term.
Do we not, do they not have the option to renew or the?
I renewed with Mr. LaFever.
Okay.
And it's my recommendation that we take a different approach. So I would entertain a motion to move forward with the recommendation of Corey Code for a three-year term appointment to the planning commission.
I guess I'd need more information, but not necessarily here. I know Chuck, I don't know the other person. Just to explain my vote.
Yeah.
I mean, we've, Corey, we've done business with him.
Yep.
And he did our logos and he did our mailbox, Dropbox, with the lettering on that. I mean, I may actually build our Dropbox, but he put the lettering and stuff on it. He did the one on the entryway too. He's right down here. It used to be the old martial or martial arts. Playing next to the trim place. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve Corey Code as the newest member of the Alpena Township Planning Commission.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I'll support.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Oh, I do have a question. So this is a supervisor decision recommendation as opposed to one person saying they want to resign, right?
This is my recommendation. It was not a letter of recommend or resignation. This was a one-year term and like I said, afforded. And after that one year, I feel confident in the recommendation that I bring forth.
So we're like, for instance, the one we reappointed at our last meeting, or not reappointed, but appointed at our last meeting, and this one, are these staggered?
Yes.
So will they, will these two be in the same term or like?
These two would be in the same term, but now we have, we've always kept it a true staggered process, one, two, and three-year terms.
Okay, how many, are there five?
Seven, well, six plus trustee Polley as liaison from the board of trustees.
Well, they're all eventually three-year terms, right?
Right. Right.
So this is for a period of what, three years?
Three.
Mr. Kroll. What was Delancey's, how long was hers?
That's a three-year appointment.
Okay, do we have two at each third?
I believe now we're, I'd have to look back at it. We actually are tracking that. That's one of the things that we've, we've done since this board has been at the table is kind of sequentially get them in.
There was never that staggered, like back when we started.
The statute calls for that, but previously it wasn't.
They weren't staggered?
We just covered that and said, well, let's fix that.
Just a really brief chapter in our illustrious history. But yes, that is, that is always kind of a unique question. I know that Laura's brought it up, but this is statutory duty and appointment of the supervisor. I bring it forth to this board as a tip of the hat for my recommendation.
So really it is a supervisor appointment, not a board appointment?
Correct.
Why are we voting on it?
I think we've just always done it, just as a tip of the hat to be, follow a sequential aspect of MTA, and that is, it's the supervisory rule recommendation. So.
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
I understood it.
Well, the appointment is the language therein.
So I just have a question. Maybe Tim can answer this. So let's just say, for example, this is your recommendation. It goes around, everybody, they vote no. Then what? So then would Nathan have to go out as the supervisor and try to find somebody else?
I, I haven't looked at the statute.
I just was curious.
I have looked at the statute now recently and not, not for today, so I don't, I don't.
I was just curious.
If it's, if it's a supervisor can appoint, I think, as a courtesy, and he wants.
Right, this is more to the board.
Delegated in a sense to, to you guys to help make that decision. What it sounds like.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
What happened?
There's not many of these opportunities where it says the supervisor, so it's like, I believe that appointment process is afforded the supervisor in the planning commission. I believe the board review and ZBA. Other than that, one oh seven. I've always, since I've been here, I've always brought it. So if there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
No.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the next item of business is a request from our nature preserve steward group to give consideration to changing the name from Alpena Township Nature Preserve, which it was founded under to the Misery Bay Nature Preserve. That is their request. They are asking this as they are getting close. They actually have an Eagle Scout candidate. And his mission is to build, self-fund and build a kiosk, an informational kiosk for the property and the trail system and rework signage. That's part of his badge, the process to become, to get that end or whatever.
Why do they want to change the name?
Because it's shorter.
But it's really not.
And I just think misery bay is a bad mark.
This has, this has been the clerk's mission, even though she doesn't like the name of the geographical figure place, which is truly misery bay on the road with the same name that travels east and west.
Maybe we can do a Halloween thing.
I guess I kind of agree with her, but I don't know. I think that might mean the bay has to be renamed by the state of Michigan.
I'm good, I'm good with it. I believe that their biggest concern, they just want to have a name so that they can follow through with our logo and whatever this body.
But we, we, the township owns the name, that area, right?
The hundred and thirty-three acres we purchased off Masters back in two thousand one to eleven for two point three million dollars.
So had they?
Utilizing trust fund grant monies. That's why I had to wait for MDNR trust fund to get back with me to ask if the changing of the name would affect the previous application. It does not have any bearing. Which was a process by worse than changing the name from Alpena Township Nature Preserve to misery bay of our horrible. That's probably right up Michelle's alley. Do we want to take our name?
Well, that's what I want.
Well.
I don't want to fight with this group.
By no means, and it has no real skin in the game. From my standpoint, it's obviously Alpena Township's property. As it will always be into perpetuity. I think that they just want to have the direction. It can stay Alpena Township Nature Preserve. I think they're looking at a name change. You know, looking at you right now. Just, just for marketing purposes.
Okay, misery bay is really going to be a good marketing tool.
Did you ever go to misery bay?
She doesn't even, if you go to the head east until she hit the lake, she'll end up on like.
Been there, I knew it.
Yes.
Have they changed it like officially from Alpena Township to Charter Township of Alpena? Is that where they're getting?
And that's why I think that when you look at this secretary's sign-off as they're, they're under the assumption and acting as it's Alpena Charter Township Nature Preserve, which when you start putting Charter Township of Alpena, it lengthens titles. So I think what they're looking to do is not rename Pine Knob. They want to have it Pine Knob, but have a different marquee.
This isn't like a five oh one C three issue.
No, 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 it is not. They've opted not to pursue five oh one C three after extensive discussion and, and meetings.
I think the bay name will was changed to Isaacson Bay?
Is that Isaacson?
Yeah.
No, that's not Isaac.
That's what he said, I think.
Yeah. That's okay, Bruce. You're geographically challenged as well. Isaacson's Bay is on Misery Bay Road. It is the municipal boundary marker just west of North Point Shores Road. That is Isaacson's Bay. Misery, misery bay is to the east and then to the north of Misery Bay Road, separating the inlet between Indian Road and Misery Bay Road.
Can we get Mosquito Lane changed too?
That's in Wilson Township, but I suppose we could write a letter to Dan.
So, so now, if I take that whole trail to the water, am I walking out to misery bay?
Correct.
Okay, and it is officially misery bay?
It is officially misery bay.
Huh.
If you saw how many carp were in there, whatever.
I mean, one, the way I look at it is, we don't really have any parks in our township. You know what I mean? We don't have like recreational places.
Because we're in the misery.
But this is our only one that, that we have.
Well, south, so sure folks would argue with you that, that B and R own, it's not owned by us, but B and R parks, so Park Ridge Point Road area is, is a park in our township.
That's true. What's that called?
Oh, golly.
No, I don't think that.
She has no, it has no name.
Has no name? The park with no name?
Is that the one we're?
That is the one. So anyways, back to the matter at hand. They have a recommendation.
Should be more public.
Oh, yes, it would be, it would behoove this conversation. They would just like the tip of that. I don't think that they'd be offended if it remains Alpena Township Nature Preserve, but that was its original filing. It was never changed to Charter Township of Alpena Nature Preserve.
No.
And we're really not helping the township anymore. We are Charter Township.
We are.
I like the idea of using the logo into their name, whatever it ends up being.
So we could do this. We could cable this matter and allow a liaison to the stewards group and then she could make the recommendation. That's a pretty solid.
Can just take a vote.
We should just take a vote.
Is there a motion to move forward with the recommendation of the steward group for the name change of Alpena Township Nature Preserve to Misery Bay Nature Preserve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. It's been moved and supported. Shouldn't be too much extra discussion between this vote. So Maureen, roll call, please.
Clerk Clavitch, no. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
That sounded like an expectation.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Okay.
Supervisor Skibby. Suffices. Yes. Okay. So moving forward.
Take our work.
So anyways. The next item of business is a quote from public safety for an invoice to R and R Truck Repair for six hundred and ninety, or sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. I'll entertain a motion to make, move forward with repairs to R and R Trucking Repair for six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents to come on a GL two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, zero, zero.
Which has funds available.
Which it does. I'll make that motion. We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
What's, what's this heater heat?
The cab.
Oh, this is.
This is.
Personal heating. Okay.
For.
Like, for some reason, I thought it was heating some other part of the equipment.
Yeah, this is for the heated toilet seat that is self-flushing.
Yeah. You're really taking us down the road, aren't you tonight?
Well, the funny part was we're going down misery bay road once she realized that I was Josh. So in that case.
This is for engine two.
That is for engine two.
It's a pump panel heater and that threw me off.
Yes. So we have a motion and support on the table. Further discussion, barring none, roll call, please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Kroll.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. This is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, it sounds like we're a bunchy-bunch tonight, so we're probably just going forward. Seeing no public comment online, further discussion? I have sent out an email in regards to budget dates. I sent out three, one of them being this Wednesday, I think, at this point in time are the second and third dates of the three dates that were presented satisfactory for everybody.
From those by me, I thought I'd responded to you. I thought I only had one of those dates available, but.
And I don't have, I didn't, I forgot to print off my email to everybody. One was this, do you have it with you, Laura or no?
I don't have it with me.
One was supposed to be tomorrow.
Yeah.
Or Wednesday.
But that's.
Already, just one meeting this month.
February, I want to say it was February third. I, I guess, please, long and short, I want to start this process, but what a time of day does everybody?
It was one to five.
One to five or the window. You know, four hours, looking at a budget, I think.
It's a Thursday?
Yeah.
That shouldn't be a problem.
I don't, I don't care. I'm in whatever.
So let's, let's call our budget date for February third scheduled one to five. That way we'll be here, be square, and we'll start the process. We're getting better and better at it, so it shouldn't be too complicated, although there are some complications that we'll be discussing. I can add to the enterprise fund. I sat down this previous week with Catherine Wynn and updated our CIP. So that should help drive that conversation. So, and she will actually be present as well. She'll be in Alpena tomorrow and Wednesday. So maybe, but she'll be here tomorrow and Wednesday, sorry. Is there any other discussion for the?
Yes, CIP meeting, it's Tuesday, two twenty-two, twenty-two. I think most people here have responded. Maybe one person at the table hasn't responded to the meeting request.
I don't know that I received an email.
I'll resend it to you.
She sent it today.
No. But it's Tuesday at, from one thirty to four PM here.
Which Tuesday?
Two twenty-two, twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Lucky day.
Did you do that on purpose?
I asked.
Yeah.
Will we be able to adjourn by two twenty-two? One thirty?
That's a potential.
We won't be done by two twenty-two.
So do we have to call a special meeting for that since?
We are on about that. We, you know, because it's going to be a capital improvement, we might start talking nitty-gritty stuff as part of our exercise. So I thought safely.
As a special meeting.
We should, and planning commission can too, and we'll just.
Call those joint special meetings.
Yeah.
Open the doors.
So then we'll, we'll call a special joint, special meeting for the twenty-second of February for both the planning commission and the board of trustees to begin the CIP discussions.
Here.
Yeah.
Correct. In this room.
Yeah. I mean, it's going to be less discussion and more training for us, but yeah.
More so, but we, just in case, when you, every time you're dealing with a quorum in a public setting, it's best us to call a meeting rather than.
I had one other question.
By all means.
Discussion, and that was the correspondence from the road commission. They had something that had to be back to them by May. Do we have to deal with that at this level?
Can we do that at the budget session? The share, cost sharing?
Oh, the cost sharing.
Yeah, do we have to deal with that at board level?
No, not, well, the cost sharing is, it, last year's allocation for.
I think it's a hundred and twelve or something.
It was a hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars or something to that nature last year, where they matched dollar to dollar up to that point. I think we're gonna, going through our budget sessions, we're gonna have to have some hard discussions, especially given a time parameter.
So we need to do the budget before we talk to them and tell them.
Yes, one thing that, so that would be one of the, always the perks is trying to, if nothing else, match their match to get two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of road work accomplished. And then also on top of that, a consideration would be the dust control measure that we do on an annual basis, which I think last year was a rough aggregate of twenty-eight thousand dollars.
We may have a difficult, we'll talk about that a budget.
Yep, and that will be a budget discussion. I'm also working with the, the road commission. They put out a parameter where they were actually going to demand a four-month review process for commercial driveways. My argument and plea with the road commission commissioners is that our entire planning commission, building official, and myself can do large-scale commercial site plan review and have a meeting in a month. It doesn't take four months to look at solely the driveway. So I am fighting that fight. We also are, their commission has had several discussions of gravel costs and cost allocation for gravel contracts. So.
Question on that too. So if we're dealing with county roads, that's one thing. And that shouldn't take four months, in my opinion, but, but what's our parameters when we're dealing with a state highway?
I dealt with MDOT in regards to the most recent driveway for Ingress Egress was that at the soon-to-be doctor's office Starbucks. Um, their review process was less than a month. Um, in, including factoring in to their ten year soon to be laid out roundabout twenty twenty-three. Uh, exploration just further, they were able to and actually. They got approval. I made one uh request on uh the developers' beh- behalf. Uh, because originally M dot did not want to have a curb cut on two thirty-two. Um, my plea is if they modify their design and remove the westbound exit turn signal, which. If you're familiar with the area and you see a guy sitting in the Culvers driveway trying to head west. You can probably drive by there again tonight and you'll still be there. Um, so I got them to modify their plan. And that still ha- happened in less than a month.
I have a question, just cause I'm not, I mean, totally up on how all this works, but with the four months, is that? The road commission wants four months to do their review process.
That is correct.
Not us, they're not asking, uh, so they would, it'd be a delay.
My, my argument is, and I asked this of Dan Flora in attendance uh with road commission. Uh, is, do they have the ability to set precedent over ordinance one forty-two, which is our zoning law? Which, I don't know if they do. Um. So. It, it's one of those things. It's remain flexible, but at the same time, we can't have. A delaying effect. To commercial growth in the township.
So it would be awful.
Yeah.
Four months is a long time.
I, I implore uh all trustees to attend uh the road commission meetings. Um, I've been finding out quite a few things um that uh leads me to have more questions. And one being the cap cost allocation for gravel uh and how they mathematically equate that. Um, being the derivative, being that the, the population center outside of the city, which road commission doesn't have. Contracts with city for their roads, so we are the largest population center in, outside of the city. Uh, that has road commission maintained roads. Um, are we bearing the lion's share of cost per ton to help?
Look at that, that spreadsheet we are.
And that is the argument that, that Commissioner MacArthur is making routinely. Uh, and actually, uh, I need to get with the clerk and look at previous year's road agreements, so he can look into those. Uh, I don't know. I think we've always been in a position to always help our neighbor, but not on the backs of our tax dollars. Um, so it's always one of those conversations that we will take in stride.
So what they're proposing in this, what was in our packet? Cause a lot of times it's like a fifty fifty share or a third, a third, a third.
That's a special assessments.
Right, a special.
Oh, I'm sorry, but with the, the projects, it's happened here.
It's fifty fifty cost share up to that hundred, whatever the threshold.
But it's still fifty fifty.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, if we don't, if we don't fund that, then those monies that would have been allocated for a fifty percent match actually are split out. Amongst the remaining. Um, and it's sometimes it goes both ways. If another municipality, if, if we had the, the means. Um, that, then those monies could actually go to extend more of a fifty fifty. So. Yes, by all means, please attend road commission reserves.
It's on my calendar, so I'll have to get with you.
I'll, I'll pick you up.
I don't ride with anything.
I mean, yes. Are you still doing your side visit? Cause I could. No, trust me. My wife would be picking me up and that would not be a conversation neither of us would ever want. Uh, but with that being said, um, is there any other discussion?
No, but that was helpful, thank you.
Okay, um, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion on the table to adjourn. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor adjourned signify by saying aye. Oppose the same. Meeting adjourned at six thirty-five. Thank you very much.